We'll get started, then we'll call to order the meeting of the class planning board for August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Automatic road call attendance.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Amy Glassmeyer here.
Yoder Hobson here.
Also, this is Carolyn Murray, our town council, and our town planner Cassandra Thayer. Angela Angela might be out there somewhere, but maybe not. So, um, are we ready to go with the first thing on the? The gender is a public hearing for modification of the site plan review. Do we have a notice to read?
We do, just a minute. I have to find it. I have a lot of files open.
You don't have to read it, Cassandra. Do you have it handy?
Uh, would someone else want to read it? I uh, I li- I think I literally have twenty files open.
Sounds like my desk pop usually. Um, I can read it if you'd like me to, Amy.
Great, that would be really terrific, and then I'll have the other one up.
Okay. Uh, so pursuant to MGL, chapter forty-eight and three hundred twelve point six G, the Cohasset zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform. Webinar ID eight three five zero eight seven zero six four seven seven. Passcode two three eight seven eight five on Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M. For site plan review modification for property being shown on Cohasset assessor's maps. E five eighteen zero zero three A twenty parking way Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. The application is for site plan review modification requesting modifications to the two thousand and eight planning board decision. The application is submitted by Dr. Roger Pompeo of one forty-four Forest Ave, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five.
Alright, thank you, Cassandra. Who do we have here for the applicant?
So I'm going to pull over Dr. Pompeo now. Um, and it looks like his wife Anne as well. Anne is pulled forward, but she is currently muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can, Anne, but it sounds like you maybe have another um video open at the same time, so we're getting feedback.
I'm going to have Roger shut his off. Can you hear me now? If you're in a room with more than your own communication, it's gonna echo.
Yeah, we're trying. This is new to us, so we're doing our best here.
We're not, we're not going anywhere, so don't worry.
That sounds better now.
Alright, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
And can you see me?
No.
Nope, uh, you're not, you're not missing anything.
Oh, well, we actually have to see you.
Let's see. I don't know, where, where, there's no button here.
Down, down in the, in the left corner of your device, it should say start or stop video.
Uh, no, it doesn't do that. You, you have, you have to see me.
It doesn't give an option there, women. Let me see, what does this say?
And do you see at the bottom, what, what do you see at the bottom of your screen on the Zoom?
Clark Brewer.
We can see everybody. We can see an empty space that I think wants to be us at the top. Nope, the two.
Well, do you see where it says share screen and Q and A at the bottom?
No, it does not say that.
If, if you're, if you, if you put your cursor, if you have one, or in your box where it has says Anne, there, there's a little blue box that should come up on the right. Up top.
Okay, stop video, put the video on.
Oh, stop video. You see that stop video, click on that.
Oh, it takes eight, eight degrees in the medical.
Y'all go through this, don't feel bad.
It's unbelievable. We should go back to in person, honest to God.
You agree. Um, alright, well, doctor, you're on the floor.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure we really need it to have to be here. Uh, I'm assuming you got the letter from Jeff DeLeese?
Yes.
And um, I think we're here because Mr. Halen uh, said we should come before you, even though uh, Jeff and I do not understand the reason for, because as he said in his letter, that uh, there is no agreement regarding the parking issue. Uh, it is something that I offered the town. Uh, and there is never an easement drawn or agreement drawn. Uh, it is something that we've been doing to uh, help out the town. Uh, it's a very small area that we're talking about. If you've seen the plan, it's a, it's, you know, about twenty square feet, less than that probably. At any rate, um, we want to make sure that the town does not have any encumbrance on the property that I own. So that we can put in a um, flower garden uh, and utilize the property that we own in the same man- manner that, that every taxpaying citizen of Cohasset does, uh, nothing more than that. At any rate, Mr. Halen wants the planning board to give approval for this. And I don't see that there's any other agreement that brings to bear on this issue. So, uh, unless
Well, doctor, other than the fact that there was a site plan issued in two thousand and eight, and now you're seeking to modify it by taking away some parking, I think that's why we're here.
Uh, well, there, there was never an agreement drawn up. There's not, that is not a document which I signed. There is no easement describing the, the issue. So, um, I, I really don't see that there's any issue. At any rate, if you, uh, if you think that, do you know of any document, signed document that I don't have in possession?
But wasn't this a special permit for the village?
Probably one of the first ones.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that. Is that a question for me?
Yeah, well, uh, there's terms of art, uh, special permit in the village is is the mechanism for review by the planning board for any project in the village. Site plan review is something else that we do outside, outside of the village, like um, for commercial projects. So this would have been a special permit under the village bylaw.
We, we did talk about the parking and I uh, I wanted to bring the, I wanted to bring the parking a little bit closer to the building for my patients. But I did not agree for permanent uh, use of the public on my property. The conditions.
Well.
But this was two thousand and ten, I was around then. My vague recollection about this was that parking spaces on James uh, Lane were gonna be dedicated uh, to your operation, and then the ones in the um, uh, in the, in the parking lot were gonna be shared, shared use, but I, I haven't read the decision to, to see if that's confirmed there. And, and what you're proposing is to fill in the, the northerly most five spots with landscaping, thus eliminating the parking? Or um, would, would the town just restripe, is there enough room to restripe a full spot off of your property?
Yes, there is. That, that's, that's a good point. There's plenty of room. As a matter of fact, you, you may already know that uh, I, I, I had already dug up the asphalt uh, prior to getting a note from uh, Mr. Halen. And since that time, the people have been parking there just as they always have. This is, uh, we're talking about one to two feet. And uh, it ve- it varies. It's one foot in some place and two in another. And um, it has not impacted the parking at all, not, not in the least bit. Um, and I, I must tell you that the, one of the reasons for this is that when the building was built, we, we were very busy, the waiting room was full, there were always uh, packed. Now, we do telehealth. And so there are twenty to twenty-five cars each day fewer coming into the area. So I really don't need the parking to be that close to my building. And my desire is to uh, plant a very large flower garden in the same location. Uh, it's, so it's only uh, uh, another foot that would be taken away, and that has not impacted the uh, parking of the, in, in the least bit. Uh, if you've driven by there, I think you'll see this during most days. Most, most of the times, the, most of those lots are empty, but uh, but the people are not having any difficulty with parking. So I, I can't see that it really adversely impacts anybody in the town of Cohasset.
I, I, I'd like to have Carolyn Murray, our town council, just weigh in, because I know she's looked at the two thousand and eight decision. Um, and has read Attorney DeLeese's letter. So Carolyn, if you could.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so a couple of um, of observations. Um, one is, uh, like Mr. Brewer just raised, I also questioned whether or not a special permit had been issued, because the village business uh, district does call for a special permit yet. It did not?
It's Sunday.
Well, I was gonna say, nothing was referenced in any of the materials that were provided. I, that doesn't necessarily mean there isn't something out there. I haven't gone looking for it separately. I would expect that Jeff DeLeese would have raised that in the letter if he was aware of one, or he would have made some kind of, of comment to it. So there's, it, I think it's just a, a question that needs to be confirmed. Um, as far as the site plan decision itself, though, goes, I, I certainly understand, uh, you know, Jeff DeLeese's letter, that the, the village bu- business district doesn't require parking for this site, because you're within five hundred feet of the municipal parking lot. But when you look at the various conditions of the site plan decision, there are three different conditions in there that refer to obtaining an easement or an agreement for an easement, or recording of an easement um, relative to parking. And um, parking was shown on the site plan, and when the planning board approved the site plan, they approved all activities shown on the site plan, which includes the parking. So I do think that the planning board has a role to play here in terms of modifying the site plan to remove any reference to these, these easements for parking and or just to make it clear that if the planning board is so inclined, that those six parking spaces on the westerly side of the property could go away, if that's, if that's what um, the preference is. Um, I, I did also have some questions as far as, you know, uh, Attorney DeLeese represents that this is a conforming use. I don't dispute that. He also says that it is a, a fully conforming lot, that appears to be the case, and also as to conforming setbacks. But as I looked at the setbacks, um, it looks like the parking way was considered to be the front of the building, which would mean the opposite side would be um, the rear of the building. The site plan from twenty-ten uh, doesn't really indicate that we have a fifteen-foot rear yard setback. And if that westerly side is permitted to be converted to retaining wall and, and, and garden, I do question, does that then mean that the front of the building is now going to switch to a, another side? In which case, what does that then do um, to any of the setbacks? Um, I think that's just something that the board uh, should look at before um, you know, making um, any decisions, because we don't want a modification of the site plan to then trigger some other type of zoning relief.
Alright, just go back to the easements a minute. Were, you're saying the decision required that easements be entered into?
The decision did have as three conditions of approval. They were eighteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Um, that had various references that either said that prior to the start of any construction, uh, there has to be evidence that the applicant has the right and or cross easement or similar legal instrument indicating the applicant has the right to use land of the town for parking. You know, that certainly seems to suggest we're talking about this area in the parking way. Condition of approval number twenty said prior to start of any activity, the applicant shall um, furnish all signed easements or agreement to grant easements. And then condition number twenty-one required copies of recorded easements to be provided. Um, I, I certainly hear Dr. Pompeo saying that no easement was ever entered into. Um, that's also something that Attorney DeLeese represents in his letter. Um, and I, I don't dispute that. The question just becomes how then was all of this allowed to happen? If these were actually conditions built into the planning board's site plan approval decision? There should have been some, you know, if, if ultimately it was determined that easements weren't needed or that easements were not going to be granted, it seems to me there should have been a modification of the site plan review decision to remove those conditions um, at the time, or at least closer to, you know, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, whenever it became clear that easements were not going to be entered into.
Clark, do you have any recollection of what happened back then?
Well, just looking at the um, decision, the decision is oddly enough labeled approval of site plan, where it would be a special permit. Uh, but on the top of page four, uh, it, it says, uh, under background information, while no parking is required, four paved spots are planned on the south side of the building. These spaces are slightly angled to James Lane and encourage one-way travel on James Lane. Additionally, six paved parking spaces are planned on the west side of the building. These spaces are to be used as shares space, shared spaces with the town. This may require an easement with the town, but will provide six additional parking spaces for public use at night and on weekends when Dr. Pompeo's office is not open. And I, I vaguely remember that there was gonna be some kind of signage to that effect, and I don't remember seeing any signage. With, with that said, I mean, I don't know in terms of the geometry, whether there's a twenty-four-foot drive aisle between um, um, i- if the spaces were moved off of Dr. Pompeo's property. Um, whether there's a twenty-four-foot drive aisle, I, I scale and I, I see that there's there's, looks like twenty-eight feet off of the Google. Um, but I, I have to think that there's some kind of engineering plan. So, I mean, again, if, if, if Dr. Pompeo wants to reclaim his property and uh, all, all the, the only impact on parking spots would be um, extending the white lines uh, uh, from two to two or, two or three feet, depending on on that. Um, you know, it, it doesn't seem like a, a big deal. Um, but if a parking spot makes the drive aisle twenty-two feet, um, then you know, maybe it should take a closer look. I, I just, um, you know, it was a part of the the deal back in two, when is this dated? Two, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and eight. Um, but in terms of amending it, it seems like it's just paint provided at the spaces there.
Well, we, we
I mean, the town does, the town needs all the parking spots for peak times that it can get, but um, you know, if, if Dr. Pompeo wants to reclaim his, uh, his locus for, for um, some other purpose, and there's enough space for, for the whole, all six parking spots, I, I, I don't.
I would agree if there is enough space, but we don't.
The middle word in life.
We don't have the answer to that sitting here tonight, and the town cannot afford to lose six spaces in that lot.
Well, I mean, it doesn't seem like
Anyway, alright, um, suggestion of what we do here tonight?
Can, can I just ask a question? I, and forgive me if I'm throwing a lot into the pot, but I mean legally, there was no easement written up. Am I correct, Carolyn? So there's no documentation that says that there was an actual legal agreement. We had a site plan review that, that the, the planning board approved in two thousand and eight, but there's no documentation that says an actual easement, and, and I agree, we can't afford to lose any parking spaces, but um, I just, I'm just trying to figure out.
The, the point is that the six, the creation of those six spaces was a condition of the permit. It doesn't have to be a written agreement that says these will happen. It was a condition of the permit. And if they can be shifted, great. If they can't be shifted, then, then that creates a dilemma for us, and how, whether we allow the site plan to be modified.
Right, but then if they're not shared spaces and, and the, all the six spaces are now on town property, then Dr. Pompeo couldn't um, put signage there saying that it's doctor's office during the day and in public at night. Doesn't matter anymore, as Dr. Pompeo says. His, um, you know, he, the, the office isn't as, as as, as busy with, with foot traffic now as it was in two thousand and eight.
Did I, uh, uh, the, uh, these parking spaces were previously used before I put my building in.
Sure.
Um, and now, and, and for my exclusive use Monday through Friday during the day, th- these six spaces will now be available to the town al- alone, because I had, do have two small signs there, and I would take the signs down, the signs say patient parking. And uh, by taking them down and allowing to revert back to the way the parking spaces were prior to my construction, the town gains six spaces for Monday through Friday.
Daytime use, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I really think it's an advantage to the town to give up this one foot of land.
But with Clark, we don't know if there's enough space there. Is that the
Kevin Arrow back in two thousand and ten did a plan that uh, shows um, you know, it looks like two feet to four feet of, of po- Dr. Pompeo's property is, is used for the parking spot. I, 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 they have to know where the, where the other side of the parking lot is. Um, they probably have that information in their file, so, I mean, I, I would, I would a- ask them to confirm whether whether these spots could be moved out into the, into the drive aisle without interfering with the twenty-four-foot minimum uh, drive aisle width.
I, I did, I did do that, and I was hoping to have that for you today, but because Cavanaro is no longer Cavanaro, it's now Merrill. And I asked um, Mike Morris to draw up a plan specific showing that. And I, he, I, he hasn't done it yet. I asked him over a month ago, so, and, and I would, I'd hope to have that for this meeting tonight, because um, I did take photos of cars that are currently parking there, and there, there, there's absolutely no problem. Uh, they, they have plenty of room, and I
I think that would be a determination of the fire department ultimately, because they, they're the ones I, I think would insist on a wide lane of traffic to get through the parking lot, so.
Well, twenty-four feet's required for these things, so if it's less than twenty-four feet, then I, then
If it's less than twenty-four feet and the fire department's comfortable with it, I'd be okay with it, but uh, we don't know that information. Amy, go ahead.
In light of the fact that we lack sufficient information to enable a good conscious decision this evening, I would recommend that we ask um, probably DPW to go out and measure the situation so that we can confirm for everyone the situation that is supposed to be there. That would enable Dr. Pompeo to further go after Greg Morris and ask him to go out and codify it.
Not Greg, not Greg Morse. It's Merrill.
Yeah, Mike Marsh, it works for Merrill.
Right. Then, we would then have empirical evidence to bring back to the, to the board and to better assess the situation. We literally don't have enough information, and the doctors being thoughtful, we're trying to be thoughtful, but what we're doing is basically dealing with hot air. It would be much better if we actually requested that the town go out and measure.
Well, well, no, I mean, the town doesn't have to measure, because Merrill Engineers has all that stuff on their plan. They just have to, oh, change the viewport from the, the plan that they gave us from the website. Um, that's, that's ve- very detailed, and these guys are super accurate, so. So I, I, I wouldn't ask, have DPW go out with tape measures. Um, the engineers can handle this. It, it's just a matter of confirming what whether the, the restriping um, would provide the zoning required drive aisle and parking spot areas and length.
So that, but the issue is who's responsible for doing this? And who is ultimately going to pay for it?
The engineers to do it. I mean, he, he's the one asking for something, so that would be on his dime. He's here in front of us. Um, and it's his, his property that he wants to make a change to. So, um, in terms of who pays the engineers to take a look at the plan and, 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 and make a PDF of, of the drive aisle, it's, it's Dr. Pompeo's dime.
Then if it is that, would you make a recommendation to that effect?
Well, he already said that he tried to do that, he just couldn't get it together for today.
No, no, would you make a recommendation uh, to us as a board member that this is exactly what we're saying we would like to see done? He seems accommodating.
I think we're just gonna continue the hearing until, you know, the, our next meeting, well, so that um, Dr. Pompeo has a chance to coordinate that with his engineers, and then we can see what the geometry is, what the spaces that's left.
It's, it's, it's
I'm not opposed to
You go out, you see where the, the spaces get moved back. Is it safe per, per the fire department to get through there? If it is.
But sa- safe i- is a different standard than the twenty-four-foot drive aisle that's, that's required as a part of our bylaw.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, the, the reality is, i- if there's a twenty-three-foot drive aisle moving all the parking spaces off of Dr. Pompeo's locus, then, you know, you know, maybe he just moves his, his landscaping back a foot from the property line, and that's okay too. I, I just think the first step would be to, the step today would be to continue the hearing till uh, our next uh, meeting. Carolyn Murray or council have some other suggestion?
Next meeting is the sixth. We already have two things on. I suppose we can put this in there.
This should be pretty quick, if.
Yeah, it should. We, we have, we have, we have a large house and we have a definitive subdivision, so it's gonna be a busy night. Yeah, it should. We we have, we have, we have a large house and we have a definitive subdivision, so it's gonna be a busy night. If we could make this the first thing on our agenda for the sixth, hopefully it goes quickly.
Dr. Papio, does that work for you?
Uh, it has to work. Uh, I don't, I really don't have a choice, but I I do have one little request. Uh, we're uh pu- um putting on a deck of six-foot extension of our deck. And the garden is outside that, so what I'm talking about here is whether the garden will be like uh. Four or five feet or six or seven feet. Of wide, but um. Uh, John Halen is holding up the permitting of the deck which complies uh. Uh, but it has nothing to do with this garden that we're planting, so I would uh hope that somebody might. Mention to him that he can go forward with the permitting on the deck. We can at least get started with that.
It's not in this area? It's not in this area of parking?
No, not not in it at all, no.
Oh, but it's on that side of the building.
So on that side of the building, but the deck itself is uh is adding six feet, but. It's a ma- the matter here under discussion is how wide will. Be my garden that I plant.
So you're bringing the, what's 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 on the plan, labeled on the plan as existing porch, you're making it six foot. Closer to the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, I mean, that's, that's quite an expansion.
Well, it's 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 an uncovered deck.
Yeah. But it's still a, it's still a big.
Yeah, and.
It it does not impact the parking issue unleashed. It's not, yeah.
I understand that, uh, it's just that. What? Wha- when the the change to the to the site plan review or special permit. We would have wanted that to be super clear. Um. You know, a de- de minimis changes to what we've approved or our decision is is one thing, but you know. We we would have, I think, wa- expected you to throw in clearly that you're gonna be making that change as well.
Well, it. It didn't seem to have been an issue. He he was, he he said we had to talk about the parking. He was, he was. Happy with the the plan itself for the deck. He had no problem with that. But he wanted us to clarify the the issue just as a a uh uh an associated matter.
Um, I'd like to respond to that, which is now we have an additional bit of information and a and a different process that we have to look at. I agree with Clark that we should continue the hearing and I I would ask. Tom to ask Cassandra if she could talk with John Halen about uh this situation, so it's clear to us. We do not have enough information. And we want to make a good decision.
And and as. Attorney Murray brought up, we might have a setback issue. With the parking now on James Lane. It might not be sufficient setback for the the new front of the building. So we got a few issues to work through, well.
But but any any of the changes in including the the drive aisle and and the um eh expanded porch slash deck. Um, as long as it's clear and on a plan. Then I think we can make this modification. Which it, but it has to be clear.
And we don't have a plan that has that clarity.
Unfortunately, Dr. Papio, the, you know, the, when you make changes to a a a site plan or a special permit decision. That's a modification. The planning board wants to know what you're doing. That's all.
Okay, uh, John had no problem with construction of the deck.
He's the building inspector. He's not the planning board, and I I hate to bring this up, that this happens in a zillion towns that people rely on that. When when the board is the ultimate decision maker, and I apologize, but that's the reality. So we'll, with your agreement, we'll continue this to September sixth at six thirty.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second emotion.
Okay, on favor.
Hi.
All right. I. We'll see.
And perhaps I could. Get an itemization of all the things you would like to have me do between now and then. I'd appreciate.
I'll 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 tell you, right, so we need, we we need to have an understanding if the if the spaces are shifted outward. Are we still go, you know, how far out will they go? Will we still have a safe traveling or sufficient traveling?
Yep.
About twenty-four feet, and then in the front, we now have to consider. What is the setback in the in on the James Lane facing side of the building?
All right, now, uh, what, the the planning board has made the decision on where is the front, since I'm on a corner. And I'd like to get this clear now. Is the front the west side or the south side in your determination?
Carolyn, you wanna handle that? I think I. On a corner lot, you can have, I think you can have two fronts, but then you gotta meet the front setbacks. I think. I think in the two thousand eight decision, it was. The parking lot facing side was the front, the James Lane line was a side, so there were different setbacks that applied. But now if the front is shifting to. James Lane. Because of the loss of the parking on the parking lot side. Um, I I think that's just a different app. Uh, per- perhaps unless, you know, even with the. Spaces shifted off, I don't know, can we still consider the parking lights side the front of the building?
Yeah, like, like out on.
Not a quick decision. We can just make off the top of our head tonight.
Out on South Main Street, the. Obviously, they have frontage on South Main Street, but they also had frontage. Um, you know, the other, the other project, uh, frontage on the James Lane slash parking way. Um, so with this example, I don't see any reason why you you wouldn't have frontage on. Um, the parking lot, parking way part. And the James Lane slash.
Yeah, it might not be an issue, but it's just something that. The council has brought up that we have to consider, that's all.
Right, I I don't dispute you could have frontage on more than one way. The question really becomes, okay, well, what are we considering then to be? The front, you know, it has been the parking way side, which is fine. But then we have to also look at. The rear and side yard setbacks and. I don't see that any special permit relief was granted. For. Say, the rear yard setback. And a- and I tend to agree with you, Clark, that some of. Some of the necessary information that we would normally get on on plans like this is kind of lacking, so we're trying to extrapolate. You know, what setbacks might be, so it would be helpful if we, if we're getting a revised plan. Uh, would help be helpful, of course, obviously, to have this additional six-foot wide um.
Proposed.
Porch deck, so that we can really see, okay, so what is the measure, what is the measurement from the lot line? Um, to see whether or not it satisfies the setback. What is being considered the frontage? If it's still going to be parking way, then can we also see? The setbacks all around the building to make sure that they um are indeed being satisfied.
So.
It's but they're two two things. Well, let me, let me just. Ten plan has, has everything to mention. I mean, the the back, the two uh, the.
I know, but that's not in front of us.
Point two, the. The one to the alley walkway is. Is ten point one and then.
I I I don't, I don't disagree with that, Clark, but if you also go up to the zoning legend in the corner of the. The plan where it tells you what the required setbacks happen to be. And I recognize that the planning board has the authority to grant a special permit. To reduce some of those setbacks in the village district. But not having any proof that a special permit was granted, I I I just think. It would be nice to be able to tie this all together, especially since. The site plan review decision never mentions anything about a special permit.
And the engineer should be able to cover that.
Doctor, doctor, to summarize. We need to know. What happens if you shift the spaces out? And what. Drive, you know, uh roadway is still available through the parking lot. And just show us the deck. And show us setbacks all the way around the building.
Uh, isn't that, that that should be shown on the plans I've already submitted. She just mentioned ten point one, so.
That's from a two thousand ten plan. We need.
That's the thirteen-year-old plan.
We needed.
Whatever, have them show whatever you're changing, you you wanna change, so we know it's clear.
We, the building has not shifted, the.
No, we know that.
And doctor, I understand that these.
Talking about parking spaces and the deck.
These are technicalities and seem ridiculous, but not, unfortunately, we have to. Meet those technicalities, so.
Good. Well, thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you, doctor.
And uh, but, uh, I guess um. Cassandra, you'll give me an itemization of everything I have to do.
Yeah, we can.
That sounds easy.
We'll get that to you.
I don't want to miss anything for the next meeting.
No, we won't. We'll get, we'll get that to you.
Okay, right, thank you for your.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. This is what time is it? It's after seven. So next we have a large home review with two oh five Atlantic. Amy, lower your hand thing, Amy.
Oh, I I can't even see that it's up. Sorry. Thank you.
All right, um, who's gonna read the notice, Cassandra? Do we have a notice to read?
I I have the notice for the next um.
Okay. Knock yourself out, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. Notice of Public Hearing Cohasset Planning Board pursuant to MGL. Chapter forty dash A and three hundred dash five point four of the Cohasset zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform. Webinar ID eight three five zero eight seven zero six four seven seven. Passcode two three eight seven eight five on Wednesday, August sixteenth. Twenty twenty-three at or around six thirty PM for a large house plan review for property being shown on Cohasset Assessors Maps. F three dash two four dash zero two zero two. Uh, two hundred and five Atlantic Avenue, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. The application is for a large house plan review for a single-family home. With a total residential gross floor area, RGFA, of ten thousand seven hundred and fifteen square feet. The application is submitted by two zero five Realty Trust of two fourteen Atlantic Avenue, Cohasset MA, zero two zero two five. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on the file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall. Forty-one Highland Avenue, Monday through Thursday, eight AM to four thirty PM. And Friday, eight thirty AM to twelve PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting. HTTPS forward slash forward slash Cohasset Massachusetts, uh Cohasset MA org dot org, five two four. Active Planning Board Applications PB. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting. At the time so designated. Sign Thomas J. Callahan, Chair, Planning Board.
Okay, so. Who do we have here for the applicant tonight?
Uh, good evening, Deb Keller with Merrill Engineers. Um, I also have Jamie Keller here from Acxiom Architects on the line. Um, representing the applicant uh for for the project, and uh I guess I'll start off briefly, and then I'm gonna pass it over to uh. Jamie to uh talk about the uh architectural features. Um, starting with the site, two oh five Atlantic Ave, um. We were before you. Would say about a year and a half ago uh for a large home review. Um, so we did uh get approval uh through the planning board as well as the Conservation Commission for a single-family home. Uh, previously. Uh, the property has since been sold, and the new owners are looking to reconfigure the single-family home, so therefore we're before you again. Um. Just for a matter of information, we we have filed with Conservation and we are on their. Next meeting agenda for next week, so we'll be working uh. Through the both the notice of intent and a stormwater permit uh with with them. Um, they uh, basically, if you'd like, I can go through the uh the site plans quickly, uh if you don't mind if I share my screen.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so um, hopefully you can see the first sheet, which is the existing conditions. Um, as noted, the site has frontage on Atlantic Ave, um currently. Uh, it consists of uh development of an existing tennis court. Um, it was foremade off from the adjacent uh parcel. And obviously, along the Atlantic Ocean and the Little Harbor is to the south. Mo- moving on, um, this is our grading and drainage plan, so. Basically, it's the same ba- uh same. Single-family home driveway, same curb cut off of Atlantic Ave. Um, the basic change between the previous single-family home and this one is sort of a flip. Between where the auto court is and the home. Um, in this case. Uh, we have the house running along the face. I I guess of, I'll call it the tennis court. Uh, versus uh previously, it ran along the building setback on the westerly side, and we had the auto court basically in this location previously, and now. It it is up farther westerly into the site. Um. Still a pool located on the northern corner where we. Previously had one uh closer to the Atlantic Ave frontage. We are retaining the same um stormwater facilities. Rain gar- garden um. Down here in the southeasterly corner, uh primarily stayed the same. We are utilizing subsurface chamber systems for uh recharge. Those locations have changed slightly just because of the new um single-family home configuration, so we have two. Subsurface chamber uh systems that uh address stormwater. Um, driveway again uh gets a tad longer because we're coming up into the auto court here. Rather than um meeting the uh previous auto court that was just to the east of that. Um, we are looking to gra- remove the pavement for the tennis court and grass it. Um, that again was discussions that we had with the commission previously um to remove that impervious that's within the fifty-foot buffer for them. Um. So just, I I guess, giving you the history there, um. Other than that, I think that's. Pretty much everything that's uh. Changed from the previous filing. We have lighting um shown. And we have landscaping, similar landscaping wrapping around um the home. Keeping out of the uh fifty-foot uh no disturb for conservation um resources. And and lighting wraps around just the home itself, all dark sky compliant, um no large. Uh, lights maintaining the entrance here. On Atlantic Ave. Um, that's sa- using the same lighting that was previously proposed. Uh, and um, this is our erosion control, so we will be using the tennis court for construction staging, which is a nice, secure location. Uh, while we're constructing uh the home, anticipated home construction. Uh, details. And then I will um pass it off to Jamie to go through the architecture.
And I, can I ask, I I don't know if we dealt with this the last time. Is there ledge removal going on here?
Uh, I would suspect that there would be some. Um.
We have a bylaw. We have a bylaw about that now.
Uh, my understanding is if we are filing uh with the commission, and I can clarify this. Uh, and going through stormwater and getting a stormwater permit. That alleviates the ledge bylaw.
No, that's. That would be an incorrect interpretation.
Oh, okay, I can, uh, that's what I was informed of today, but I have not followed through with the research on that, but I can double check. So the ledge removal would be for the home and the auto court, so I can check to see how that would trigger any bylaw. Requirements. But the only ledge, uh exposed ledge that we have on the site is in this corner of the uh property currently. That were, obviously, that's exposed.
That's what we're concerned about in that. The bylaw, the bylaw basically says you can't do it, so. We'll have to. We'll have to, we'll have to re- we'll have to revisit that, but.
I i- is there, I thought there was a uh, if it's associated with the building.
Yeah, that's the, that's the underground ledge. The purpose of the bylaw is to protect exposed ledge, which is the unique feature of Cohasset.
Uh, but they can remove it, they just have to come before the board and and address the issues.
It's 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 a special, it's a special.
What is that bylaw called again? And and it may not be incorporated into the. Um, E code three sixty, but it actually should should be there by now.
Yeah, I think it was. If we, it it was.
What's it called, Ron?
It was probably where we uh amended Article eleven of the Bible.
It, by name, Mr. Chairman, it is. It's under Article eleven. It was called uh the Land Alteration Amendment.
Correct, and I think it's, I think it's on Cohasset E three sixty now.
Yep.
Okay, well, I'll I'll double check that, and if we need to uh send in a special permit, we can do that. Uh, is it okay if Jeremy?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't I share my screen, um, Deb?
Sure, absolutely.
Correct.
Let me stop mine, and I'll let you go ahead.
Okay. Um, so I'm Jamie Kelleher with Acxiom Architects. We started on this project, um, I believe, just before. The new year and um. The idea of the redesign. Of the project in, at at the very root of it was to. Uh, change the. Uh. Garage from being basically a sort of basement entry to creating a first floor entry to the house. And also to try to orient the spaces in the house to some of the wonderful views that they have from the site. Um, we're seeing the view here. From the drive court that's now sort of at the rear of the property. And I think it kind of gives a sense of. Um. The look that we were going for with the house, um, knowing that this was on a. Kind of steep slope to use the Gambrelle style as a way to kind of soften the roof forms and try to bring the eve lines of the house down. Um. And. As we move around, this would be um. What I think is sort of the view as you're seeing it from the road, you're getting a sort of a diagonal. That shows the path of the driveway through. Into the drive court and then um this corner. Uh, where we see uh walkout basement level. And then the main portion of the house, which we've. Tried to kind of break up the verticality as much as possible. Uh, with the change of material, uh, we have the stone at the. Basement level. And then kind of a. You know, a natural uh cedar shake or shingle um on the upper levels. And. Final view we had, um. This would be sort of the. Portion of the house that faces, you know, the the best ocean views, so obviously trying to incorporate. A lot more glass um than what was in the previous design. Take advantage of, you know, that location. Um, going into the. The plan package, um. First floor. Um, you know, the finished space you see shown in the green. Were around fifty one hundred, give or take, square feet on the first level. And the second level, um. Were around fifty seven hundred square feet, I believe, fifty-six. For the total of approximately ten thousand seven hundred. Um. We are proposing a roof deck. Um, in this location here. Access by stair as well as um. A residential scale elevator. And then we have a series of elevations, um. So height wise, um. We are. Submitting this and proposing the house based on. The previous zoning, as we were aware, um. When we became aware of the potential change, uh, we did. Getting contact with the building inspector. To just begin a discussion of how we could. Try to finish the application, get things um. Submitted to him as quickly as possible, knowing that that change could come and. Uh, just due to the complexities of. The site that we were dealing with and mainly with fitting that motor court. Uh, designing the retaining wall that we could have at the back to allow us to fit that first level in that motor court. And still have a reasonable slope to the driveway, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we did the best we could to gather everything together. And, you know, provide the complete application as quickly as we could. Uh, as it stands, we have a height to. Uh, the peak from average grade of thirty-nine, ten and thirty-two feet to the midpoint of the main roof. Um. And I believe that is.
Carolyn, what's the effective date of our new definition? Is it retroactive now, back to town meeting?
It is indeed, yes. It it actually took effect when you first advertised your public hearing on it back in. The fall sometime, I'm sorry, the spring.
I mean, you know, you say it's thirty-nine, ten to the mean, which of course you're at the limit. And how how did, how did?
The peak.
How did you determine the mean? I mean, did you determine that under the old regulation or the new one?
Uh, the average grade was calculated uh by Merrill, um. To be twenty-six point two, I believe, and that, um. Deb can clarify, but as far as my understanding is, it's taken. Of the existing grade ten feet away from the footprint of the of the building.
All due respect, I think the new definition and the new. Means of making the measurements apply.
But see, Tom, it's either one or or the other, not a mixture of both. I mean, I mean, as a architect, you know. You can't create a new definition of height that. That's a combination of the two.
I'm not. I'm saying that the new definition applies, and the new definition also requires more data points to determine. What the uh grade is on a on a lot with, you know, changing grades, so I.
Tom, I, I.
I'm not here, I'm not hearing that the old one applies. I'm I'm not hearing that they made it in time for the old one to apply, so.
Tom, I I did talk to the building inspector. And he said the old definition applies because they did apply for a building permit. Prior to the date that's required. That's what he told me verbally.
The gentleman just mentioned that they, when they got noticed that the change was being made, which I presume was when the public hearing was notified, you know, when the notice was made. So. It couldn't be.
I'm not entirely.
Had to apply back in March or whenever the public advertising was, according to Carolyn.
All right, well, we're gonna have to know, I'm I'm not, I'm I'm gonna have to be satisfied that it meets that and and. The large home application, I presume, has come after that date. I don't know that we're tied to the building, the the building permit application, but. Be that as it may, move on.
So, yeah, generally, um, aside from that, we're, you know, here today to discuss. You know, the design in general, um, as a large home. Also. Asking for, you know, leniency in this uh evaluation of the height issue, um. Given the complexity of project of this size. Uh, it can be very difficult to, you know, try to speed up that process when. A change like that is sort of looming in the distance, and we're not entirely sure whether it's actually going to be made. Um, I I understand that there are rules to follow, uh, but. You know, we are asking.
Rules, rules designed for particularly for projects like this that we kept seeing repeatedly and repeatedly. That pushed the limits. And. So, anyway, I've said my piece, I, um. Uh, you know, you all, you guys have anything else to say? I'll ask for comments.
Yeah, I got comments.
Well, wait, now let me see if the applicants are finished, and I I'm sorry that I interrupted them. I went out of turn. Um, you guys all said, or shall we?
No, I think there's a lot that we could talk about, but I think, you know, having comments and questions would probably be the best.
All right.
Approach from this point.
All right, Clark, I'll start with you then. Go ahead.
Yeah, so um, the other large home review that we did for this property. Um, seemed like a, an, an, a non-regional uh architecture team that didn't quite understand. Even New England architecture. It was, it was a unbelievable design. Didn't fit, as far as I'm concerned. But I didn't, I didn't hear anybody else say that at the time. But wow, this is, this is substantially uh a substantial improvement, architecture-wise. And certainly, um, in terms of the scale, the buildings seems like it's similar to what we looked at before. Um, but I, the the big thing that jumped out at me is. You know, from the water side, it's a four-story building. You got a a walkout basement. Um, first floor, second floor. Uh, third floor and roof decks and roof area, but I don't see a attic plan or a basement plan as a part of your package and. And uh certainly some of the square footage uh would uh would apply. There are some limits to uh the height in the attic area. But but we would still want to see the plan because some of that square footage is is definitely going to be in your. Gross um residential gross floor area calculation. Um, so we'd want to see that, um. And um, in terms of preservation of landscape, I didn't really get a. A sense from the civil engineer what. Wh- whether there's anything being kept or or whether it was all. Scraped and maybe that issue will come up again with uh, um. Uh, the special permit for for the ledge. Lighting, I think they've covered. Circulation seems fine. And and the other, the the only other. Comment I have is at the pool area, it looks like you got a a ten-foot retaining wall, no. No guard rail, doesn't seem safe, um. You know, one of your renderings had that, um. You know, it looks like, yeah, that, looks like a ten-foot drop-off uh onto concrete. Um. And, you know, the circulation issues, it. Is, I think, relevant to large home review, so um seems like, you know, I understand the. Um, elegant pool concept, but there may be a safety issue there. On the other side, the the um retaining walls are limited to three feet in height, and I I think that's a great safety factor. If you, if you look at, if the other planning board members look at the um. Engineers' plan, they they um they have individual separate. Um, retaining walls that are no higher than three feet, so that nobody can fall more than three feet at a time, essentially is. Is the, is the way that that works as opposed to this, this, this. Really pretty big element that will be still visible, I think, probably from the street. Um, but the big thing is getting the plans right and the gross square footage uh for the large home review. I'd say, um, we we would have to continue and and those plans get uh submitted.
Right now, there is no plan for finishing of those spaces, um. We can submit them as.
I don't think it matters. I mean, honestly, the attic, the attic. It doesn't look like.
Just to, just to.
Cardboard boxes. It looked like it's, it's, it's real space, so I want to see the plans.
It's, it is, it is very possible that if. If the height issue is is something that we're. Required to adhere to, that the attic could could have drastic change, so.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Um, so we'll have to see how that pans out, um.
Well, I mean, it makes sense to leave this meeting with the issue on height resolved. But like I said earlier, I talked to the building inspector, he he. Indicated that the calculation for this should be under the original one based on. When a permit was applied for, but. I can't confirm that. I guess I'd I'd want counsel to weigh in, uh, and then. And then I don't know if this board should be able to give the applicant some direction.
Amy?
Uh, thank you, and uh thank you to both of the presenters. Um, there's a couple of things that I think. Would be very important for me to have dispelled. And that is, we are not in some way. In a position to. Take the experience of the original. Design and then presume that we have any benefit from it since the owner. Previously sold the property and an entirely new project was created. It is very important to know whether or not, uh. Uh, Mr. Helen actually. Was in communication clearly with the applicant so that we know the exact date. That that the uh co- the consequence of our new bylaw was in effect. And. What constitutes the condition of a building permit? When they didn't even have plans designed yet. They did not have an architectural design yet. So I don't know how you can give somebody a building permit for something that doesn't exist. So I would like to have that clarified so that I understand it um going forward. The second thing I would say is that. This is a forty-foot-tall building. They are digging into the ground thirteen feet. So this is not something that we can ignore. We have to recognize that as that's a bonus room. But it has a consequence for the 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 issues that we are concerned about, and that is. The size of the building and its real physical height, so that needs to be um understood. And. We have to acknowledge that if we approve this as it's designed, we are talking about a forty-foot-tall building. The third thing that I would say is that we do not have any landscape information. That would be sufficient to have a sense for how this property is ultimately going to unfold in the landscape. And in contrast, the original applicant had a very elaborate, very detailed, very thoughtful landscape plan. And this is a unique piece of property, and it also has both um great potential, but it also has risks involved in it. Um, and we don't have that information, which would be important for us to be able to make a good decision and to. Provide a building um permit. So that the the owner could feel comfortable with our approval because it was going to be buildable. And it was going to meet this expectations of um what we as the board, um. Apply to projects. So I think this is a great starting point. But my own feeling is that we need a lot more information. And we need to have more detailed conversations about exactly what's ultimately going to be here. Because there are. About exactly what's ultimately going to be here because there are parts of it that are aesthetically. Problematic. Clark ma- made a point about the pool. I mean, it's not clear to me how high that wa- wall is, but it is gotta be 13 feet. Because that's the, the, if you look at the right side of the building, that's the, the height of the building from the, from the ground. To the first floor, so are we talking about having a 13-foot-high wall around the pool area? How is that going to be managed? Um, and, and how is that going to vary across the landscape? So there's just a lot of questions. There isn't any. I don't have an opinion at this point, but I would say we have to have more information to make a good decision.
Okay, thank you. Deirdre.
Going to first agree with what Clark has put forth and also what Amy has put forth. I have some. I really would like to see some clarification on the height issue. I have some serious issues about the preservation of the landscape. Um, right now that current property is filled with trees. Are we talking about clearing it completely? All those trees are removed. That's a huge, um, concern. I know conservation will be on top of that. Um, from the water side. A 13-foot wall around a pool. Is this an endless pool? Is this just a pool? Um, if we are putting up a structure of this size in that spot on the waterfront, um, in Cohasset. Yeah, I agree. There's lots of homes like that right now, but that doesn't mean that we should continue to put those kinds of homes up in those spots. I would like to see some definite definition on the height. That is a huge concern from the water side. We already have homes along the oceanfront. That look like hotels and belong in a resort, so if this is a private home, I would expect it not to be 40 feet in the air. So I do have concerns about that. Again, the preservation of the landscape and I have concerns about the ledge removal. And we do have a bylaw in place now, so I am. Very focused. On the preservation of that landscape and that spot in this town.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Cassandra or Carolyn, do you have anything to add?
If I could just add for, I don't know if this is necessarily going to answer the question on the height calculation. But just to make it clear to everyone, the statute provides that when you have a zoning amendment. The zoning amendment does not apply to a building permit or a special permit that has been issued. But that zoning amendment will apply to any building permit or zoning or special permit issued. After the very first date. Of the planning board's public hearing of the proposed zoning amendment. So this height change was approved at the May annual town meeting. I don't recall exactly the, the dates. Of your public hearing, but likely sometime in April.
Yeah.
Oh, I was gonna say, could have been March. There certainly would have been advertised in March in any, any event. Um, so, uh, so piggybacking on what Amy said a few moments ago. I fail to see how a building permit could have been issued. Back in March, maybe even late February. For a design that is only before you now and clearly a design that requires large house review, if not other permits from the town. Um, it perhaps, you know, I, 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 I don't dispute your conversation, Clark, with, with John Hallen. Maybe John was thinking of the prior design that had been approved. Um, but I think it is, it, you know, unless someone can show me. Uh, something different in the chronology in the application process, it seems highly unlikely. That there was some sort of a permit that was issued before your first legal ad. Of the public hearing on the height change, so, um, I would tend to say that. The height definition as revised does apply to this project.
Unless, unless John Hallen can provide some documentation that. Um, reasonable.
Um, Clark.
That would, that would be a redesign of the, of the project.
This, this is a redesign of what project?
This project would have to be redesigned if you used.
Oh, yeah, no, and, yeah, and I, I don't think we should reference the old project. This is a completely new project. This is different. It is not an amendment of the old one. Um, all right, Ms. Keller, Mr. Keller, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I would, um, I would like to add, this is Deb Keller again from Merrill. Um, we did complete a tree inventory that was done. With the previous project, obviously that's existing conditions data. We do have that. Um, I don't believe it got into, um, your package, but it is in. The conservation package. Um, I can absolutely provide that, so it shows you all the trees that were inventoried on the site. Um, all the trees that are being removed and in actuality, um, this project is, um, removing less trees than previously. Um, proposed, um, with the previous project. Also to add, I know that, um, with the previous project, they were looking to do a lot of restoration within the 50-foot no disturb. Um, to the coastal bank, um, which was removed. From the proposal. Uh, during our permitting with conservation due to the fact they didn't want us to work within that zone. Um, so a lot of that restoration work actually, um, was removed from that project. Um, and we are intending to use the same planting schedule, but I, I'm happy to work and see if we can get a more detailed landscaping plan. Um, to go along with that and provide you the tree inventory, uh, documentation as well, so you have that for the record. And, um.
Definitely, it's part of the, it's part of the permitting for this.
Sure.
So.
Sure.
Yeah, section, section C1B preservation. So, yeah, if you could, if you could, um, make that clearer, that would be helpful.
We're going to need to continue this.
Yep.
For the members of the board, we were going to meet the 20th and we're going to also have to meet the 27th to do our public hearing for the next round of zoning changes, so I'm. Just going to talk about that a little later, but, um. I suggest because of what we have on for the sixth already that we keep the meeting for the 20th for this and any other. Normal applications and we just have the 27th will just be the public hearing on the zoning. Um, so with, without the objection on that, I would suggest a motion to continue this to. September 20th at 6:30.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Where I.
Hi, Tony Keller. All right, so. We will see you at the 20th, it's 6:30. And we will try to make you first up, so, um. We'll see you then. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that finishes our agenda business. Angela sent me a note yesterday. We have a number of minutes to approve, so I'm going to make a motion, do the one motion. We approve.
Tom, sorry, just to clarify, um, I thought Angela's email was saying that they need to be completed. Did she physically send you drafts of them?
No.
Yeah, I don't, I think that was just a note saying that they need to be done, like.
Never mind, never mind. We don't need a vote. All right, um, regarding zoning, so the bylaw committee is chugging along, we, so. We were originally operating on the belief that town meeting was going to be early December. A week or so ago, the select board moved it up a month, so now it's early November or mid-November. So that kind of compressed our schedules, so we're kind of meeting every Monday night this month. We have a September 5th deadline to have what we're going to do done. Um, we will have some things done, probably, it's probably scaled back from what we were originally thinking, but we will have some things. Um, because Judge Cutler was unavailable for our meeting on the 20th. We are going to schedule our public hearing for September 27th, 6:30. As soon as the text of the change, so, so you know. We're going forward with the wholesale change of Article 4. It's going to be rewritten top to bottom. Article 15 with accessory dwelling units is going to be combined with it. Uh, the article will also be making a change to. Uh, some of the common driveway regs, bringing it into a bylaw, and it's going to require some housekeeping changes or definitional changes to Article 2. So it is, it's going to be a big article. It's going to have two parts to it. And then. Article 5, which is the dimensions and dimensional regulations. Artic- the changes in Article 4 and the changes in terminology will generate changes in Article 5. So that will go forward. Substantively on Article 5, the only thing that is going to come forward is that we are going to put in a height limit for accessory buildings, which. Believe it or not, our bylaw does not have, so theoretically an accessory building could be 35 feet tall. Uh, we are going to bring that in and bring up in a height limit for. Solar arrays. One of the things we have to do with Article 4. Is bring some solar provisions into Article 4 uses. It's something the Attorney General's Office is. Really hot to try it on, and as the judge has explained it to us, she will, she will deny and. Reject whole bylaws if you don't have the proper solar things in it, so we are doing that. Uh, but we need to put in a height limit for, you know, if you had a standalone. Array of solar panels. I don't know if everybody's ever traveled up and down River Street in Norwood, Norwell, there is one in a big, in a side yard. Or house that has a giant side yard. They have a standalone. Um, solar array structure and it's probably about. And 12 feet high, I would guess. So we're going to be doing that, and the only other possible change that the bylaw committee hasn't resolved yet on substance is, is perhaps a height limit of buildings in harbor that would be lower than 35 feet. To account for base flood elevation, so that hasn't been decided yet. Um, there's two other articles we may get to, may not get to, but what I'm going to do is as soon as the texts of these things are finalized, I'm going to circulate it to. This board zoning. Select board and the advisory committee is already asked to be clued in as early as possible.
Um. And, and, and just to, just to clarify, there hasn't been any. Any, um, discussion on the heights for accessory structures or, or, or structures in the, in the, um.
Yeah, we just have to do it, but we just haven't set the number yet. Um, which will probably be the subject of the next meeting next Monday, but, um. With the other boards, I'm going to ask everybody to. Submit any comments rather than be. Blindsided or nitpicked at the last minute of the hearing since we now have this compressed review schedule. This board obviously has to do it in a public hearing, but I'm going to try to get these to you as early as possible, probably next week, you'll see Article 4. Uh, because it should be finalized by next Monday. And, you know, I want you to start thinking about it, making comments that we can address at the public hearing, but again. It's because town meeting got moved up a month, everything's compressed. The public hearing on the 27th really would like to get through it all in one night. And that will leave October for us to go through to the other boards for approval. We are going to roll it out in a public forum ahead of town meeting and, you know, we just need to have the time to do all that.
Tom, I think in, in particular, the, um, inclusionary zoning changes and is going to take more than. More than 10 minutes to get through, given that there's. Some kind of controversial. Um, perspectives on that.
Yeah, I, I wish I could have participated more in the meeting Monday, but, um.
We'll, we'll see. We're going to have public hearings, I'm just.
Yeah, we'll see.
Rushing, rushing, uh, a, a complete rewrite of Article 4. Um, may not be possible. We might have to take a little bit longer than anybody wants, unfortunately.
I understand that. I understand that. I would just tell everybody that the bylaw committee has been working on it all summer and the judge has. Done yeoman's work, um. And, and the, the essence of the reorganization is that it's now going to set out what our. Primary uses and what our accessory uses, things that aren't clearly distinguished in the current bylaw. The table will be amended accordingly. Um, inclusionary zoning is already in Article 4, that will stay, it's being. Tori, you know, it's being amended. I wouldn't say substantially, but it's being amended. Accessory dwellings will be brought in from being a separate article. Which is Article 15 and be brought into Article 4 as a use. The consensus is to expand the availability of developing ADUs to accessory buildings. But also to keep the caps that we have on it now of 10 a year and 10% of the total housing stock we. Work me from wrong, the week, the week ago, the week before last Monday, we agreed not to take out those caps, so. Um. It's, it's, you know, very comprehensive article and, um, as, as soon as. The text of it is absolutely final. I'll, I'll get it to everybody, so you see, you're not going to be surprised by it on September 27th and seeing it the night before. Um. On the other update, Clark, you missed, I'm sorry, you missed the meeting the other night, but the consultants on the housing choice. They kind of narrowed down the properties that we were. Look, thinking about that could be included in an overlay district on 3A. Um, we're just going to redo some fine tuning to it.
Yeah, the, you know, the, the problem on the draft that I saw is that some of the parcels that should be in there aren't, and they. Exceeded the number of potential units that we could have from 600 to like 1,000.
Yeah, no, I know, I know that.
I don't think that makes much sense and.
No, they, they were, they were. Well, first of all, they.
It's like from, from 19% to 28%.
Yeah, I know, I, I know that.
No plan in this housing choice program.
In, in the area of, in the area of land. Towards Cohasset Station, remember it all has to be adjacent, even. Crossing a street, so that creates a little trickiness, but they're going to take another property out. Um, because you're basically told them to keep anything that's residentially zoned out. They also identified a small area on the Situate line that's in proximity to the North Situate Station. And I think that what, when they do these final tweaks. You know, whether to do it all at the Cohasset Station, nothing in the south part of town, or have a little in the south part of town, some at the Cohasset Station. Um, you know, we're going to just present those options to the powers that be in town and, you know, the article. Implementing housing choice will not be ready, you know, will hopefully not be dealt with until the spring at the earliest, so, um.
But a 50% increase on what's, what the requirement is, I think is, it should jump out at everybody is, is.
Yeah, but it.
As being a problem.
Well, I, it did, it did at our meeting the other day and, and, and. The other is to, the thing is to look at the land that they. Are including in this potential district and what, what is its actual. Redevelopment capability. Um. And, and that was raised to them as a concern, uh, obviously, but. For example, a lot of the area around the Cohasset Station was wetland, so it's not going to be built. On, um, some of it, the one, the big. The biggest site at the moment. Is the one we just permitted up the little cul-de-sac. Which hasn't been built yet behind the storage facility and then the hardware store site. And then down on the south end of town, you know, it, there is. Uh, a. Piece of property today that has a warehouse, I think, on it and, uh.
I know, but, but three Avalons is one thing, but five Avalons.
I know that, I, I know that, but yet, again.
Going to be excited about.
That is the analysis that we'll all have to go through. I'm just saying that the consultants have done, I think. A good job at taking the direction we've given them. And coming up with a product, you know, that at least now can, you know, through the course of the fall and, and then to the winter. Will lead to some very, uh, robust discussion on it, so, and, and again, as soon as. This board, you know, everybody will see that as soon as that's ready to go, but right now we're focused on the. Fall town meeting rather than that, but, uh, it's, it's moving along, so that, that, that was my point. Um. Anyway, that's it for me, updates and what's going on. We have had some quorum issues and. I look, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad we could all get together tonight. Kevin did text me that he, uh. While we, after we had already started that he couldn't make it time, so. Yes, Amy.
Um, I would like to. Ask us to consider. Each picking a town. Committee and between now and, let's say, October 1st. Going to the committee of our choice and asking for time to. Going to the committee of our choice and asking for time to explain to the members of that committee. What is coming up on the warrant? And not leaving it to chance because I I think that it, you know, we used to be, we used to go to places and have conversations. I understand that we are all really busy.
Amy, that process is already in place. And as a matter of fact, anybody who read a warrant articles by August thirty first is supposed to submit a notice of that. And the zoning bylaws were submitted today.
Yeah, I mean, it goes to. To us for public advertising and then it goes to advisory and the ZBA and. You know, there's an extensive process of review.
Yeah, I mean, one of the good things.
I am speaking to the fact that. It's not just the committee. That would be hearing what we're saying and providing information about. But the public that's listening in to the meetings that are taking place. We did not have a good turnout. And we need a good turnout. And it can't be done by Tom alone, can't be done by you alone, Clark. If everybody could pick something that they like and care about or people they know and talk about the changes in the bylaw. It's better than.
Process, but I don't know which committees you're you're talking about or you're just.
Let me, let me just say this.
To the changes.
There will, the 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 these bylaw articles will be presented to every committee they have and some of them have already. For example, Rob Hillman, the chair of the advisory committee, reached out to me a month and a half ago. Please let us know what's going on as soon as you can, so that we're not dealing with it at the last minute. We've added a zoning board member, zoning board of appeals member to the bylaw committee so that there'll be communication with them. And I don't get last minute stuff from them like the last cycle. So that's going to happen. And again, there will be a public forum, but. You know, the last rounds of forums had sixty was the best attendance we had. We don't, we barely get over, we barely get two hundred for town meeting. And and with all due respect, Amy, you've mentioned this before in emails. I think you have a completely unrealistic expectation of what kind of a public engagement you're going to get. To show up at a meeting about this.
You know, you know, Tom, I think that I think that Amy's idea is right that people. Have a a chance to digest this stuff.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You can't get them to come to a meeting. If there's somebody has a magic.
I'll have, I'll say personally, having been to all the meetings of the. Zoning bylaw committee. And reviewed the judge's language ahead of the meeting and then reviewed it with the judge. There's there's some aspects of the zoning that. Even an expert has trouble getting. Getting their arms around. It's it's not simple stuff.
I agree.
That, I mean, it, you know, in terms of. Mid to the to some extent that. The the public has to trust that these committees. Understand the impact of bylaw changes that we anticipate. And and we ourselves may not. So.
Well.
It's not a perfect, it's not a.
No, it's not a perfect.
To some extent, you you pass, you understand eighty percent if you're lucky. And and then you deal with the consequences of it. What does it mean? I don't know. It's new.
Well.
And 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 I think that's the, that's where the conditions that we're, we find ourselves.
Yeah.
I think it's very imperfect, Amy.
It has always been that way. I will tell you that we have had in. Now. Two and a half years of the bylaw working group and the bylaw committee, zero. Public participation at any of our meetings, zero. Now, granted, the bylaw working group used to meet in the afternoon, which was a bad time to do that, but.
Matter, there's still a a notion of the public good and presenting stakeholders, even if those stakeholders aren't present.
Right, but a lot of it, we, like you said, you have to, they have to rely on us as the people who have been elected or appointed to do these jobs, to do the job and present it to them in the right way. I will do. We will do whatever outreach we can do. And if there's some ideas, I'm all ears, but to think we're going to get more than a couple, more than. Fifty people at a forum, a meeting, however you want to call it or structure it, is unrealistic.
But but like I said, we're gonna go to the selectmen anyway in order for them to. Approve it for the warrant and public advertising and and a public meeting for the planning.
I'm gonna ask to the select.
And we'll have planning board hearings, probably more than one.
The dead, well, I hope.
Advisory and the ZBA is, you know, sort of an advisory vote. It's not a required one, but.
I want to go to the select, I want to go to the select board, you know, again, the deadline is September fifth to submit the warrant articles. I'd like to get on their agenda. Like as close to the fifth as humanly possible.
Other outreach would be to have a prominent spot in the on the town in introductory webpage. And 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 then if there are holes, Amy, that you think we could fill other than everybody volunteering to go to more meetings. Sorry.
Just as one idea. We have an.
Other holes that seem missing in terms of.
We have an electric sign that allows us to actually put a small message. On key locations in town. Why couldn't we use?
QR code, a QR code for the for the zoning bylaws. That's a great idea. If we had like. Even if. Up by eleven at the Walcott Center, at Town Hall, at.
We'll ask the powers that be, we'll ask the powers that be that can do can do that. You know, and I think I gotta, you know, I know there was criticism of the surveys we did, which were pretty much adjunct. I mean, we got at best on one of the surveys, I think forty respondents. It was out there in every town report, a town weekly town update that's on Facebook on one four three.
But the reality is people don't.
You guys, I give I give up. Just.
Don't give up.
Let's not leave this.
My point was going to be, we have someone now on staff that we never used to have twenty years ago, who's. Supposed to be the communications guy that we utilize that, we utilize the recommendations and we still got thirty people bothering to answer a survey. It's 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 not the effort and trying to reach out. It's the fact that the public does not. I won't say care. They care when they come to vote at town meeting.
Complicated stuff, Tom. It's complicated stuff. It's not easy.
I get it. I I get it, but you know, I. Like I said, any ideas on outreach, I am all ears about it because I I'm very, very disappointed at the outreach that. You know, the results that we get, but.
Hey, I'm gonna sign off. I'll see you guys later.
Yeah, I gotta run. I want to go do some things fun today as well.
Thank you, Catherine.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Hi, Amy.
All right.
Happy birthday, Tom.
Happy birthday. Everybody in town knows your birthday is today.
I'm officially old too.
Only in here, Tom.
Going first, unfortunately. All right, thank you all. See you in a second. All right.
Good night. Good night.